I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Wynn?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. We'll have the invocation by Finance Director Kingsley Okuriki and we'll have the pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Wynn.
Okay, stand, let's pray. Gracious Lord, we thank you especially this holiday period for the times we have spent together as Garden Grove family. Help us to see each other's services complimentary. Help us to walk in harmony tonight and always as we seek to make the best decisions for our community Garden Grove. We are thankful for another blessed year in Garden Grove and we pray for even better 2012. Amen.
Please place a flag and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a community spotlight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like Mr. Okuriki to give the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Mr. Mayor, this evening the Garden Grove City Council pays tribute to a distinguished group of individuals celebrating milestones with the city of Garden Grove, having dutifully served the community for 35 years. Would Doris Cutman, Gloria Pickrow, and Kevin Rennie please step forward? Let's begin with Doris.
The best.
After being laid off from her previous job in the summer of 1976, Doris came to Garden Grove City Hall for a dog license and saw a job opening for senior clerk typist. Six interviews later, she was hired. As the city embraced computer automation, Doris became a word processing operator and later a supervisor. In 1984, she was given the supervisory responsibility of the city's print shop, mail services, word processing, and the newly formed graphics division. She thrived in that assignment until her retirement in 2006. Since then, Doris has worked part-time to assist the city's special events as well as provide her signature hugs throughout City Hall, and I'm personally a beneficiary of those. Doris has served a lead role in the city's special events committee for 35 years, been involved with nonprofit and service organization groups, and supported various community activities, particularly related to cancer support and research. The city family has shared with Doris her joy of becoming a grandmother and has been very supportive throughout her struggle to battle cancer. As a single mother, she feels Garden Grove has had an important role in raising her children, particularly her son, third, who has worked in the public watch department for nearly 30 years. The city thanks Doris Cutman for her professionalism, commitment, and dedication. Congratulations, Doris.
Thank you.
Next, we honor Gloria Pickrow, who began her career with the city of Garden Grove Police Department in September 1976 at the age of 19. She started as a records clerk and quickly established herself as the go-to person due to her excellent work ethic. In November 2000, Gloria was promoted to the rank of community service officer and was assigned to the crime prevention division, and in February of 2017 was assigned to investigations as an investigative aide. By sharing her experience, patiently answering questions, and displaying a level of maturity and common sense, Gloria has been a role model and mentor throughout her career, especially to the young cadets who have worked for her on various assignments. Gloria was selected for a special project in May of 2007, assigned to the gang suppression unit to assist with the preparation and enforcement of the city's first gang injunction. She was instrumental in organizing and bringing efficiency to the process of obtaining and enforcing the injunction. After three long years working side by side with officers and district attorneys, the gang injunction was implemented and is enforced today. In recognition of these efforts, Gloria was awarded the prestigious Medal of Merit in 2010. Throughout her 35 years with the city, Gloria has worked both full and part-time. She and her husband, Bill, a supervisor with the public watch department, have three children, Raquel, Nathan, and Ariel. The Pickrow family recently grew with the addition of a son-in-law, Renee, and their first grandchild, Caleb. Throughout her career, Gloria has been a valued employee at the police department with the city of Garden Grove and in the community. Congratulations, Gloria, on 35 years of outstanding service. This brings us to Police Chief Kevin Rennie. Kevin began her career with the Garden Grove Police Department in 1976 as a police cadet, becoming an officer in 1978. In 1986, Kevin was promoted to the rank of sergeant and five years later to lieutenant. In 2002, he became a captain. Kevin was named the department's deputy chief in 2005 and took the reins as police chief on January 1, 2011. Chief Rennie has been recognized during his prestigious career as Rookie of the Year, Officer of the Year, Investigator of the Year, and Sergeant of the Year. He has also been awarded the department's Medal of Merit and Medal of Distinction. Kevin is credited with initiating the opening of the department's juvenile justice center in 1998. The center identifies at-risk youth at the earliest possible stage. It is a model process of collaboration between the department and the school district that has been followed by several other agencies throughout the county. Kevin and his wife, Donna, have two sons, Bill and John. Bill is a police sergeant for the city of Irvine and John serves as an officer for the city of Garden Grove. The city of Garden Grove thanks you, chief, for your 35 years of dedicated service and leadership. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of these dedicated employees with a gift in recognition and appreciation of their extraordinary years of service to the city of Garden Grove. The city proudly salutes each one of you for the successes you have earned, the impact they continue to have in our community, and the accomplishments destined for their future.
Thank you. Thanks for all your... You've got to finish. No record working.
Do we have one more after?
Yes.
Mr. Kim would like a picture of his president.
Okay. Okay, we'll get a couple of pictures and then you'll have the opportunity to say a few words.
You want to ask closer?
We'll go in one, two, three. Go in one, two, three.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I want to say I've really been blessed when God showed me this way and direction to come 35 years ago. People's wonderful, this is my second family, they've helped me raise my kids and keep a positive outlook on life and that, and I couldn't ask for a better, you know, employee relationship. We have a great council, outstanding council, great city manager, can't forget that, and my party buddy, Kingsley, so thank you again very much, and I hope her be around, I don't think 35 more, but, thank you.
It's really hard for me to believe that actually 35 years ago today I started my career with the city of Garden Grove, December 13, 1976. I don't regret anything, in fact, I tell everybody I'm still blessed because I still look forward to coming to work every day after 35 years, and I think it's because the environment that the leadership of the community provides, certainly the city council, city manager, and all the city staff, but it's really the workers that I work with also. Everybody in this room knows that we have a really dedicated city employee staff that really come together not only to provide service but also to make sure that it's a good working environment, and I can only reflect back on three years ago. Mr. Okuriki mentioned that my son is a police officer for the city of Garden Grove, but three years ago he had a really unfortunate severe accident, and the heartfelt support that I received, not only from the members of this council but from all the members of the employees, is something, number one, I can never say thank you enough for, and number two, I can never repay, but it's an indelible mark in my mind. And in fact, in my office, I made it a point to not make the office about myself but about the department, so there's pictures in the office that are more or less a historical perspective, but the one picture that I do have that's personal is a picture of about 125 city employees out in the desert, my son still in a coma, but they were celebrating his 22nd birthday even though he couldn't attend it. So I think that speaks volumes, and that's why I'm here today, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
Okay, at this time we'll go to oral communications for the council, the agency, and the industrial development authority. Alex Kim.
Good evening, Mayor Dalton, city council members and staff. My name is Alex Kim, I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the Southern California Gas Company, and I'm very proud to introduce Pat Harpersat with the CFO for the Boys and Girls Club of the city of Garden Grove. And each year we give competitive grants to our communities in our service territory, ranging from Visalia all the way down to San Diego, and this year we had an education grant that went out, and we wanted to announce that we have a winner here. We have the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove being our 2011 education grant in the amount of $20,000. So I'd like to congratulate the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove for this amount. And I have a check presentation here for $20,000. I'll show it to your folks here and to the audience. Congratulations, give her a hand.
Pat, you're not going to try and deposit at the ATM, are you?
Exactly, right at the ATM bank.
You'd like to take a picture.
Okay. Congratulations.
Don't drop it, it might bounce.
Go in one, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, Jeremy Harris.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. Jeremy Harris with the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. I just want to go ahead and echo what the council and the city did here this evening in recognizing the individuals with their 35 years of experience. It's always nice to have a base, a root, if you will, to go back on historically and look at these individuals that have done so much for our city, so I echo the sentiments from the council and then on behalf of the chamber, congratulations to those individuals. And then also at the same time, I'd like to echo what the gas company's done here this evening for the Boys and Girls Club, a cherished organization in our community as we all know, and the gas company, a wonderful partner here in the city of Garden Grove. Thank you, Alex, and the gas company, and congrats to Pat and the Boys and Girls Club. The chamber's here tonight just simply to express, it's this time of year again, our annual chamber holiday mixer. Most of you should have received an invitation or some type of message by now, but I'm here publicly to announce that it's tomorrow night, December 14, at 5:30. Once again, our host will be Farmers and Merchants Bank, will be sponsoring this event. We encourage the community, public officials, of course, and city staff to come out and join us, which should be a wonderful event, again catered by Jay's Catering, another great business here in Garden Grove. So looking forward to seeing everybody there tonight, hope you can make it, and thank you so much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, Paul Real.
Good evening, I'm Paul Real at 5532 Tiffany in West Garden Grove. I supplied her a copy of all of this, but I'd like to address the need for some code updates for landscaping of our front yards and parkways to embrace the new system from the Metropolitan Water District of Orange County with their turf removal program. We've joined this program, but our codes don't reflect that. They used to be cheap water in the old days and we didn't care, but now it's not that way. At this point, I've received two code violation letters because my yard does not contain 50% vegetation. I have followed the examples from the Metropolitan Water District, and I used all their stuff and went to their website and I got their information, I went to their office, and I made a nice gravel yard with plants in it, all California dry plants type of stuff, and the code department has advised me that the city likes grass and even ivy. That's what the lady said. And then when we said that we're doing this for water conservation, we were told that we are not in a water conservation mode right now. On our water bill insert, it says that we're in stage one voluntary. They want plants in our parkway instead of gravel and flagstone, and if you put these little dry xeric-like plants, they're going to get killed by the traffic, they're going to get killed by the dogs, and right now I can't put any in anyway because it's winter time. There's 30 residences or more that I have a list of attached here that their parkways are cement and brick, one right around the corner from my house, one right around the corner four or five houses down, but my house needs plants in the parkway, they don't. I think there's something a little inherently wrong with that. So if we had some new things like you guys did with the fake grass and you added codes, because you can't change codes very easily, I understand that, but you can add codes with those examples that the Metropolitan Water District has and we'd all have a nice time and then I don't have to get these letters anymore. But that's the only thing I was thinking, since we're all trying to save water, and that would make us right up with the Metropolitan Water District, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, and we will have someone contact you this week.
Well, thank you very much.
And we'll discuss this with you, okay? At this time, I'm going to close our communications, and we did have one closed session item prior to the council meeting, but there was no reportable action taken. Okay, at this time, I'll recess the council and we'll go to the agency. Ms. Fertal, would you please call roll?
Member Beard?
Here.
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Wynn?
Here.
Chair Broadwater?
Here.
Industrial Development Authority business, madam clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Beard?
Here.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Dalton?
Here.
Vice Chair Jones?
Here.
Chair Wynn?
Here.
Yeah, the first item is reorganization, selection of a chair and vice chair. Do I have any... This is a tough job. I'll nominate myself.
Second.
There's no law against that, guys.
Who you nominate for the vice?
Oh, and we'll have Mr. Dalton, how about him for the vice?
I'll second that.
Second, third.
Call for the vote.
Most receive five yes votes.
And now it's my turn, Bruce, you take over. Well, I thought the chair was Dina, have I got this mixed up?
Will you nominate yourself, so you're at the chair now?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he took it himself. Okay, we're through with our communications, do we have any public comments? No. Authority member comments?
None.
We've done the reorganization, so...
We do have some consent.
Consent item, we have one consent item, two, three, three consent items.
I move the items.
I have a motion, call for the vote.
Most receive five yes votes.
Okay, we will reconvene the city council and we'll go to reorganization of the city council, selection of Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination if I can.
Go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Dina Wynn.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Do we have anybody... Okay, I second, we have a call for the vote.
Most receive five yes votes.
Okay, consent items.
Items 8A through 8I be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a member.
I move the items, second.
I have motion, second, call for the vote.
Most receive five yes votes.
We're at public hearings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, your first one is 9A, which is an amendment to the Garden Grove Municipal Code, and John Clark is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal, honorable mayor and council. This is another one of the revisions to the municipal code, this is Title III, having to do with taxation, and the revisions are all of a cleanup nature, there's no substantive changes, and one of the reasons for that is to not get into any issues with potential Prop 13 making changes to tax regulations that were in existence prior to that, so this is probably the most conservative of all the revisions, and it's strictly non-substantive changes. And with that, I can read the title of the ordinance and then respond to any questions you may have. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove amending Title III of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to remove obsolete references, to conform references to current city organization and practices, to make consistent with recent changes in state and federal laws, and to make other non-substantive changes.
Thank you, is there any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second. I have motion, second, call for the vote.
House Speaker Wynn?
No.
Most receive five yes votes.
Okay, 9B.
Mr. Mayor, 9B is a public hearing to consider amendment to PUD in the industrial park zone to allow for a indoor sports facility, and Aaron Webb is here to give the staff report on this item.
Mayor Dalton and city council members, amendment A16211 is to add this new use to the MP industrial park. Business owners have been looking to operate indoor sports facilities, have been looking at the reuse of large warehouse buildings, and that's because these buildings have the volume and height to accommodate an indoor sports facility with multiple courts, and all that is required is limited tenant improvement construction. Thank you, Carl. After searching for a couple of years, the MAP Sports Facility Partners found a warehouse space and are therefore requesting a code amendment to add a new use called an indoor sports facility to the MP industrial park zone, subject to a conditional use permit and the adoption of a negative declaration. This code amendment will preserve the character of the industrial area and allow a limited number of indoor sports facility uses. The intention is not to fundamentally alter the allowable uses existing in the MP zone, all current industrial warehousing, research and development uses will continue to be permitted. The amendment will allow a limited number of indoor sports facility uses to share space with the regular industrial uses, and they will not operate at the same time as regular business hours, rather the sports facilities will operate after hours on weekday evenings and on weekends. Each individual proposal will be subject to conditional use permit approval. The CUP process allows the review of each proposed business on an individual basis and the tailoring of conditions of approval to each unique site. The Planning Commission considered amendment number A16211 on November 3, 2011, and recommends that the city council hold a public hearing for consideration of the amendment and introduce the attached ordinance for the first reading adopting the negative declaration and approving amendment number A16211. And I will now read the amendment. Amendment number A16211 and negative declaration. It's an amendment to Title IX to allow indoor sports facility uses in the MP industrial park zone, subject to conditional use permit approval, at the southeast corner of Western Avenue and Lamson Avenue at 12552 Western Avenue, Garden Grove. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, any questions for staff?
I have a few, just a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I'd just like the coming wave for reuse of facilities like this.
Had several inquiries about it, and so there does seem to be a demand.
Okay, and the primary use for this particular will be volleyball, basketball, no, basketball?
Basketball.
But it could also be volleyball, badminton, gymnastics and such. How about swimming? Is there any...
No pool there.
Okay.
They're just going to recover the floor with hardwood flooring and put in the courts.
I'm just talking about the MP use, this is a new use we're talking about.
Right, an indoor sports facility as defined doesn't say swimming, but someone could come in.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public... I'm sorry? I beg your pardon.
This one's 9B, so...
Yeah, Sarah UCB. One 9B and one's 9C, yeah.
Hello, my name is Sarah UCB, I'm a resident in East Gate area of Garden Grove, and I'm a student at Brother and Christian High School in Huntington Beach. First of all, I'd like to commend you on your past efforts in aiding small businesses, and I know that the Buy and Garden Grove thing is a very big deal right now, and this addition of a sports facility I think would be a great addition to the community, especially since it can be difficult for people who want to play sports, and the weather outside is not really beneficial to that. And it's also a good way for communities to develop, especially since it creates a camaraderie between people that want to work there and especially students where instead of doing something that honestly wouldn't be beneficial to the community, it would be good for them to use the facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, anyone else on 9B? Okay, I'll close all communications, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move the issue.
A second.
Before we do that, we actually didn't get the title read.
Sorry, I read the amendment, not the ordinance.
Okay.
Go ahead, Erin, I insist.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove adopting a negative declaration and approving amendment number A16211, a code amendment to allow indoor sports facility uses in the MP industrial park zone, subject to conditional use permit approval. approval.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion. Sounded the same to me. I have a motion, but I have a second.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
9C.
Mr. Mayor, 9C is a similar request to amend the PUD at Knott and Acacia for a similar indoor sports facility, and Chris Chung is here to give the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The subject site is an existing 6.88 acre planned unit development located on the northwest corner of Knott Street and Acacia Avenue. On November 17th, 2011, the Planning Commission considered Amendment Number A-164-11, amending the PUD-104-70 zone to add indoor sports facility as a permitted use, subject to conditional use permit approval. Along with the amendment request, the Planning Commission considered and approved a conditional use permit request to operate a new indoor sports facility, next level sports complex, subject to city council's approval of A164-11. The Planning Commission voted 4-0 and adopted the resolution Number 5752-11, recommending approval of A164-11. Three members of the public came forward and spoke in favor of the application, with the exception of comments and concerns, which included the following: potential noise issues from vehicular traffic in parking spaces, if parking spaces were provided on Brady Way, potential lighting issue from new streetlights along Brady Way, locking of the vehicular access gates along Brady Way, and potential noise issues due to early hours of operation. The applicant agreed to lock the gates and provide no vehicular access to the subject site from Brady Way, except for fire department emergency access. The Planning Commission also applied conditions of approval to the conditional use permit that addressed these concerns to ensure that they were incorporated into the operating conditions of the indoor sports facility, next level sports complex. To allow an indoor sports facility to operate at 12821 Knott Street, approval of an amendment to the PUD-104-70 zone is required to add the use as a permitted use, subject to conditional use permit approval. The Planning Commission recommends that the city council hold a public hearing for consideration of Amendment Number A-164-11, amending the PUD-104-70 zone to add indoor sports facility as a permitted use, subject to conditional use permit approval, adopt a negative declaration, and introduce the attached ordinance for the first reading approving Amendment Number A-164-11. I will now read the ordinance, and it reads as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove, adopting a negative declaration and approving Amendment Number A-164-11, a code amendment to allow indoor sports facility as a permitted use in the PUD-104-70 zone, subject to conditional use permit approval. And I'll conclude staff's report, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, one question. Is Radio Shack going as a part of this project? Radio Shack connected to it?
It is not included as part of this project, but they do plan to integrate it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter?
I believe I have my card.
Okay. Then you must be Sal.
That's correct. That's correct. I'm Sal Gergis, and I live, my house, my backyard faces Brady Way, and Brady Way has always been an issue in the past, and I was very pleased by prior city council decisions to allow the banquet room that is there, which has been absolutely fantastic. But we do have a problem on that street, that it is very dark, as the other people that have come forward and mentioned what their complaints would be, and I'm glad that they decided to not allow parking in that area, because it would make it very, very difficult to allow, it's very dark, you know, a lot of people that come over there, and there's much inappropriate type behavior that happens back there during late hours. And that street has been sort of neglected for a while, and it's not only that it's dark, but also the, all along the wall of the residents on that side, there are specific plants that we can't remove, that is normally maintained, and they would normally come about and keep it about the wall height. But that, in my particular property, that has not been done. They've allowed many other types of trees and palm trees to grow there. It has not been maintained, and in fact, it's actually breaking my wall to the point where bricks are falling off. And it's serious for me because standing on the other side of that wall on the street level, it's almost chest-high, so you can literally look into my backyard. And I've called and asked for that to be taken care of in the past, but that has not, nothing has happened. But since there was activity that pertained to Brady Way, I would really, I'm glad that they disallowed parking in that area, because that would have made it a lot more difficult.
Okay.
But I do, you know, I have no problem with having that facility there, providing they keep the parking in that area, and I would encourage similar facilities to allow our teenagers and people to actually have a place to go. So I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other, any other people that want to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion. I have a question. Go ahead. Are we going to do away with parking on that street? Or are we just shutting the gate on the...
Condition 33 involves repaving slurry ceiling and repair work as necessary along on Brady Way.
Okay, is there going to be parking? I don't think you answered my question. And are you taking away the parking if there is parking now on that street?
There currently aren't any spaces striped, but there is space available for parking.
Are we going to make that a change?
It's, it is included in the condition as being striped.
Yes, are we, yes or no, are we making a change? So we're going to paint that red?
Are they allowing parking where there was? There is...
The, excuse me, the parking that's along Brady Way was designated there some time ago. Our intent was to have it slurry sealed and restriped so it would be made available. However, with the modification to the condition, which is having the gate secured there so that you do not access from Brady Way, it wouldn't make any sense to park there, because they'd have to walk all the way around the side.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just wanting to know if you're going to, I mean, the answer is yes or no, are we going to allow parking there, or are we not going to allow parking there?
The answer is yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other... What I was worried about was whether they're going to be parking whatever, is the parking for, for the marriage place. I mean, I don't want to see that parking taken away, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, related to the parking, there's sufficient parking here, and it's beyond what the code requires, correct?
That's correct.
It's all onsite parking for the people who use it?
All onsite.
Okay, another question, may I?
Go ahead.
Is tournaments, they're not allowed to have tournaments, or does it take a special permit to have tournaments?
It would involve special permit, correct.
Okay. And it's completely separated between the two properties by fencing, between the garden room and this project?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
A second that.
I have motion second, call for the vote.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
Okay, item 13 matters from council members. Ms. Quinn?
Yes. I'd like to direct staff to review the administrative citation procedure and possibly bring the statistic relating to the application of the administrative procedure back and report back to council.
Is that all right?
It's okay.
I'd like to see that.
All right.
Thank you. Do we have to call for a vote?
You have a right to anything on the ballot. Yeah, we all agree, anyway, it doesn't matter.
Yes.
Yeah, just bring it back. Okay, Mr. Broadwater? I'd like to ask the mayor to remember Larry Callahan. As we close tonight, he died on February 2nd. He had diabetes for the last 10 or 15 years of his life. He served on, I don't know how many years he served on the Planning Commission. He was always a good guy. He actually moved here from Massachusetts when his two sons were killed in an auto accident, and he just wanted to get away, which I can imagine wanting to do that, and then he moved to Garden Grove, and he loved it here. Lives here about 25 years. So, I'm going to miss him. He was my treasure in a couple of campaigns, and he loved to be involved, he really did. He could drive you nuts talking sometimes, but get past that. He was an executive board member on the, for the carpenters' union, and he used to have a lot of free T-shirts that all said carpenters on it and everything. We joked him about having carpenters on his underwear, but I'm going to miss him. He was a good guy, I really liked him a lot. Thank you, Ms. Quinn.
I want to send my condolences to Larry's family as well. He was a great man. I think he served on the grand jury for the Orange County, and I think he did a great job. He loved it, loved to be with people. I'm going to really miss him. I also wanted to touch base on the fact that it's really important that we support our businesses and Buy in Garden Grove, but lately, when I went to buy items, I looked at a lot of items, and they weren't made in the USA. So, if you can, try your best to look for the tags or the label that says "Made in the USA." It would make a big difference for our economy. And that's all I have. I hope everyone have a happy holiday and happy birthday to Mayor Dalton's wife, Sandy.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I'd just like to echo the sentiment regarding Larry Callahan. Wonderful man, and I actually served with him on the Planning Commission for several years and got to know him very well. Very, very genuine man, and had a lot of pride and passion in this community and all of his involvements over the years with this community, so we're going to miss him.
Mr. Mayor.
Happy birthday to your wife, Sandy.
Thank you.
And then I want to say happy holidays to all those out there. It is the holiday season, and I would encourage everybody to celebrate responsibly if you can. One of the items we had was the DUI checkpoints that we're going to be having as the city, so be careful out there. Also, related to the holiday season, there's some scams going on, sadly to say, that happens this time of year. But overall, the holiday spirit's in full force. We had a tree lighting ceremony recently, Winterfest, and they were so enjoyable. If you missed it, try and catch it next year. Santa Claus was out there, Mrs. Claus, toys were there. Great performances by all the entertainers that were there, and so for next year, get your tickets for the Winterfest, it sells out fast. But again, related to the holiday spirit, I wish all and everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and see you next year.
Thank you. Ms. Quinn, you have nothing?
I'm sorry, I forgot one item. A few months ago, we had a group here by the name of Orange County Community Assistant Foundation, and they were asking council to support them on a festival. At that time, we told them maybe they needed to start little and then work up the way up, well, they took our advice. And this coming holiday, they have a holiday concert at our Garden Grove Community Meeting Center. They have given 200 free tickets to students who have a grade point average of 3.5, GBA or above, or A and Bs on the report cards, and they would allow anyone with a toy worth $10 or more to go in free to see the concert. And the concert is on December 18th, 2011, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 11300 Stanford Avenue in Garden Grove. Anyone who would like to have more information on this, you can call 714-793-7488, 714-793-7488. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Broadwater? I forgot to say happy birthday to your wife, Sandy. Thank you. I'll tell her you said so. Okay, just a couple of things. Just recently, we had the tree lighting in Garden Grove, and it was the fifth or sixth annual one, and I'll tell you, it was just awesome. There was well over 2,000 people, well, there was 2,000 gifts given just to children, and a lot of those children would not have had anything. They don't generally have as good a Christmas as most of us do. But there was entertainment, there was cookies, chocolate, all kinds of things for the kids, and it really makes your heart feel good if you go to something like that and you see that, as I say, some of the kids that wouldn't do as well, you know, are out there and they have smiles on their face, and they can't wait to see Santa. And I usually get to introduce them when he comes in on his sleigh, but the sleigh is an old antique fire engine that sometimes puts a little slower than you want it to. But that adds kind of to the fun of it, because the anticipation, and everybody enjoys it. And the city of Garden Grove, I'll tell you, with all the people that we have, our staff members, on duty, off duty, volunteering time, they just make everything work, and I can't thank them enough. The, we do have Christmas coming up, so I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy and Holy Christmas, and I am going to adjourn the meeting for the memory of Larry Callahan and his family. And there's nothing that hasn't been said that I could say. He was just a wonderful man, and he did a lot for this city, and was proud of this city, and we're sorry for his family's loss. I'm going to adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting on Tuesday, January 10th, 2012, at 5:30 p.m. in this building. Thank you.